My name is Richard Lyle. If you don't know me, I'm the President of RESCON, which stands for the Residential Construction Council of Ontario. We're an association of builders and developers in both high-rise and low-rise residential housing in the province, but of course, most particularly in the GTA. I'm pleased to welcome Anna Bylaw, Toronto City Councillor, who's also the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, probably got that wrong, but of the city of Toronto. And of course, my friend Jack McLaren, MPP, is here with us today as well, all the way from Ottawa, although more recently from Queen's Park, I guess. But anyways, this is a day that I've been looking forward to for some time. We at RESCON became quite concerned, much like we did with infrastructure, that things aren't what they should be. And in looking at the situation, realized that we did not have the metrics and data and information that we really should have to understand housing. And so, we went to a firm that we thought was the best in their field on big analytics, a firm that is award-winning, that has done leading work on healthcare and pandemic modelling, TCHC, Toronto Housing, they did a report there, Peel Region, and commissioned this work. It's an independent report, but we felt that our understanding of housing and housing affordability was very limited. In fact, there was vital pieces of information that we didn't understand, because housing, of course, is connected to basically everything. And the research has, at this stage, has, and you're going to hear from Paul this morning, has actually demonstrated just that, that there are a lot of components that have been overlooked, or at least not brought together in their totality, because we do like to connect the dots. I love connecting the dots of things. I love the Peel Region analysis and the connection with investment and things like that, the TCHC report, and the connection with healthcare and housing, connections with education and housing, connections with, you know, why aren't we following the US out of recession like we normally do in housing? So, things like that. So, this is exciting for us, and we're looking forward to continuing this work and working with everyone who's interested in the issue. Just by show of hands, out of curiosity, who is here from industry? The building industry? Fantastic. Government? Hmm, okay. Academia? So, it's a nice balance, good mix, and that's what we were hoping to see. So, I'm now going to turn to introducing David Borowski. Many of you know David, Professor Emeritus, Ryerson University. David's been a leading researcher on issues related to this, and of course, more recently, set up the Centre for Urban Research at Ryerson University. And I'm proud to say that I am a member of the Advisory Committee, God help them. And anyways, it's a great group, and they're doing some great work, and we're proud to be co-sponsoring, co-hosting this event today with Ryerson University. David, good morning.
Thank you, Richard. As you know, I'm the Director of the Centre for Urban Research and Land Development, and it's our pleasure to co-sponsor this event with RESCON. But I'd also like to welcome you to Ryerson and to the centre. Well, it's great to have everybody here, and it's always great to have industry people and government people here convening to discuss important issues. So, welcome, and thank you for coming this morning. We're really happy about this event, because it does really meet the mandate of our research centre. The mandate of a research centre is try and look at the economic aspects of urban and government policy issues. This falls very into that category, it ties in very neatly. And it does tie into a number of other seminars and pieces of research we've done over the last year and a half to two years. We have done seminars on affordable housing, we had a seminar on inclusionary zoning, we had a seminar in understanding the land market, because the land market is key to making affordable housing work. So, understanding the land market and government policies related to landmarks is very important. We've also have research going on in a number of these areas as well. We had research going on in terms of looking at the land market, inclusionary zoning, and currently, we have some research looking at trying to understand the public land ownership patterns across the Toronto region. In this particular research, we partnered with Evergreen Foundation and Affordable Housing Lab to try and identify all publicly owned lands, federal, provincial, and local. And we hope to put this out as an inventory, so people can see what land is available, what land has the opportunity to be used for a variety of purposes, including leveraging that landed asset for affordable housing. And that should be coming out, hopefully, in the next couple of months. It's just taken a little longer of a thought to collect that particular data. I should point out that all of our past seminars and our research, they're available on our website. There's a card in there that gives you the website. And in terms of our last presentations and seminars, you'll find all the PowerPoint presentations, but we also did visual filming of that, so you can look at the presentations as well, kind of in that perspective. So, we've had the opportunity to partner with a lot of different groups. We partnered with RESCON, as I mentioned before, we partnered with Evergreen Foundation, we partnered with the Monk Centre, we partnered with CMHC on some research, we partnered with the National Executive Forum on Public Property. So, we're open to partnering. So, if you're representing an organisation who wants to work with us and preparing seminars, doing research, you have research ideas, you think they're important, please talk to us and approach us, and we're happy to talk to you about those opportunities. We look forward to today's session. Today's session, of course, is right in the heart of what we're looking at, something that's very important from our urban policy perspective. It's important to understand the economic levers that can make affordable housing work, and how to really effectuate that as a public policy activity. So, we look forward to this today, and we look forward to taking on further research and seminars on this topic as well. So, with that, I wanted to introduce our first speaker today, and we're very pleased to have today councillor Anna Bylaw. And Anna has been a councillor for the city of Toronto since 2010. She's known to be a strong advocate of housing, strong in terms of looking at low-income housing needs, looking at issues for women, looking at issues for new Canadians, all these are very important. And currently, she's Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. So, with that brief introduction, I'd like to welcome Anna, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you so much. I'm delighted to be here today. Well, I'm delighted to talk about housing and affordable housing at every opportunity, and I'm particularly delighted to have a room full of people in the sector and interested about tackling the issue of housing affordability in the city of Toronto. I'd like to thank RASCON and the Centre for Urban Research and Land Development here at Ryerson for not only hosting us today, but actually the research. I think that this kind of research is crucial for city, the province, the country, to develop good policy and to work in partnership with you. There are some great speakers lined up today, and I'm apologising right away. I will have to leave right after I speak, but it's for a good cause, because the Mayor's Key Item at council today is the Open Door Programme, and it is all about housing. And we have several housing projects today at council, so I will have to leave for council, but I'm looking forward to reading the full report. I think that we all agree that we have a crisis, a housing crisis. Some people don't like to call it, oh, you know, maybe it's not a good term. I call it what it is, and I think it is a housing crisis that we're facing in Toronto. Far too many residents are being left behind in our city due to the high cost of housing. Just some of the statistics, and you've probably heard some of these before, one in five rental households are paying more than half of their income in rent. Twenty-one percent of our rental households are living in overcrowded conditions. The current vacancy rate, 1.6%, not a healthy, we all know that we need at least over 2.3% to have a healthy vacancy rate. Not enough rental build is being built in the city. Housing is the largest expense for most of food bank clients in 2013. Actually, 73% of their income and shelter is the average that they spend. And 1.2 million in the GTA households are considered to be low-income. To me, it is clear that housing affordability is an issue that is affecting all of us at every income level. And when I talk about affordable housing, a lot of people automatically think I'm talking about public housing. And through these last four years, I've been very careful in making people understand that nowadays, when you talk about affordable housing, you might be talking about your son and daughter that just graduated from school with a huge school debt, and probably graduated as a nurse and works in one of the hospitals and cannot afford an apartment in downtown Toronto. That's also the kind of affordable housing issue that we're talking about nowadays. But the situation doesn't end here. Toronto Community Housing is Canada's largest social housing provider, the second largest in North America, just next to New York, and it's in crisis for the last decade, if I may say so. Most of the 2,200 TCHC buildings are over 50 years old and in need of $2.6 billion of repair, just to bring it to the state of good repair. It's not excellent, it's just in a good state of repair. TCHC and the city have funded one-third of these costs, actually, with the last initiatives, we've actually surpassed $1 billion that the city has invested. And we've asked the other levels of government for one-third share to help us to fix these units. The reality is that if this investment is not done, we will be having to board up 7,500 units. So, quite frankly, the 60,000 households that currently live in TCHC buildings and rely on social housing deserve a lot better. The affordable housing waiting list, 95,000 households in our city, that's where we currently stand right now. But to fully understand this housing waiting list, we also have to dig a little bit deeper and see who is in there. Actually, 34% of these households are seniors. Forty percent of these households include children under the age of 17. And the scary thing is, by the time we might be able to give them housing, they're probably 27 or 30 years old. That's the reality we're facing. Twenty percent of these households are single-parents households. These are areas of the population that need our help, and we are truly, in order to truly create a city that cares, and one that gives everyone an opportunity to succeed. We are seeing all across our city the growing gap between the rich and the poor. The old city of Toronto is turning into a predominantly high-income area, and parts of the inner suburbs are turning into a generally low-income area in the fringes of our city. And that's why land development is also so important, and actually legislative things that we do in the city and in the province are particularly important to deal with some of these issues. Wages are not growing at the same level of the cost of both rental and ownership. Even when taking into account condos, the average home price in Toronto is over $600,000, and a detached house is now selling well over $1 million. So, for some areas of the market, prices are still growing year over year by 10% or more. I actually read an article the other day that put it in a perfect way. Somebody was saying that, "My house made more money than me." And I thought that it was put quite well, because it is true, there is actually quite houses that are making a lot more money than us nowadays. So, as Toronto's housing advocate, and you're probably thinking, "Why is she still standing there, and why is she still working on this file with all this scenario?" But I am hopeful. And as Toronto's housing advocate and Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, I know that the city has a big role to play in helping to solve these issues. I also know and truly believe that housing is at the centre of economic prosperity, healthy people, environmental sustainability, and livable neighbourhoods in our city. If we truly want to target these issues, you have to deal with housing. That is why we have been working on an ambitious agenda, targeting every facet of the housing spectrum. And now, let me talk a little bit about the different things. When we talk about housing, we can not only talk about rental or homeownership. I think we need to talk about the housing spectrum, and starting with shelter and supporting housing, all the way to market housing. And that's what we've been doing at the city. Different aspects of the housing spectrum need different solutions, there's different issues, but they're all interrelated, and that's how you need to see it. So, this month actually marks the second year anniversary of the city's first Housing and Homelessness Services five-year plan. The goal of this plan is to transform the systems that deliver these services to residents, so that the housing stability for our vulnerable population is improved. We want to help people find and keep their homes, because sustainable and permanent housing is the bedrock of good health and social and economic wellbeing. Last April, city council adopted a plan to improve the emergency shelter system, and already, there has been much progress in replacing shelter capacity lost to real estate transactions and obviously socio-economic pressures that are having more people using our system. Just today at city council, there is an item to buy a hotel, and you've probably heard it in the news. One of our councillors in Scarborough had quite a challenge to make sure that his community was going to be okay to buy that hotel and put it into a shelter. This will be the conversion for an improved living environment and programming for many vulnerable older adults. It's actually for senior men. This is not the first time this year, just a couple of months ago, we dealt with the Open Door, and again, financed and approved another shelter. This is to help to ensure that we have the capacity in the system. The city is also opening the new transitional housing, specifically for LGBTQ2S youth, and the two programmes are expected to be up and running within a few months. You've probably heard as well about the George Street Revitalisation Project earlier this fall, which will see a development of a best-practice emergency shelter model alongside assisted living and transitional setting permanent affordable housing with supports and long-term care. This is a $500 million investment in social infrastructure that would continue to provide services to vulnerable seniors and for generations to come. So, we're dealing with shelter, and in reality, we need to deal with transitional housing, because we know that 30% of the people using our shelter system actually stay for over a year. So, in reality, the lack of housing is what is much creating the pressure on the shelter system. But for example, we know that rooming houses in our city is also a form of housing that we need to do. That's why the city of Toronto is currently undergoing a rooming house review across the city of Toronto. And for me, the challenge is actually going to be between keeping the balance between the safety on the tenants and not bringing such legislative burden, that instead of bringing these houses online and creating a system where people actually feel that there is a benefit to register, we create an underground economy, because the legislation is so prescriptive. And so, I'm looking forward to see what's going to be coming in April, it was supposed to be in May. We weren't quite there, so we sent staff and said, "No, this is not going to work." We send staff. But this is a form of housing, and the city of Toronto recognises this. We're doing the review. This past summer as well, we had a $5 million programme called Toronto Renovates Rooming Houses, where the rooming houses were legally, we were working with the landlords, and a lot of them are non-profit organisations that run these rooming houses, and that to bring them on board, to make them legal, and to make them safer for tenants. Now, shelter, transitional housing, rooming houses, public housing. I talked a little bit about the challenges that we're facing about in TCHC, but I think it's also important to talk about what would happen in our city if we actually invest in these $5 billion that we're doing in revitalisation and the $2.6 billion that we're doing in repairs. And that is actually 14,000 jobs a year. That is $4.5 billion of tax revenue for the province and the federal government. That is actually 90% reduction in greenhouse gas in our city. That is 15% safer neighbourhoods in our city. So, it's not only about fixing the 60,000 households and the lives of the people that live there, it's the economic impact that this can actually have in our city that I'd like to talk. And obviously, this has been extremely useful, and that's why I'm so excited about this presentation today, because this has been the most useful kind of information when we're asking the province and the federal government. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was in a meeting with the province, and I was asked by the Premier's Office, "Why should we do this? You know, why?" And I said, "Well, you don't, but you have to make tough choices. In governments, we have to make tough choices. So, you decide if you want to spend $3.8 billion in healthcare costs, or you help us with one-third of these repairs. It's your choice, I'm not telling you what to do." And that's why this information is so helpful. So, public housing, now we get to working with you. Private sector, non-profit organisations, because now we have that mid-range, those people that actually make about $40,000, $50,000, that could live with about 80%, 100% of CMHC rents, that we need to target. We know that there's not enough of that housing as well. How do we do that? How do we work with those people? So, for the last couple of years, we've been working, we had a private sector housing roundtable, and fortunately, we elected a mayor that believes in housing and believes that we need to tackle this issue, and that has been the best thing that happened to me, because for the past four years, well, the first four years is banging my head against the wall, and now finally, I can get all the media to cover any housing thing that we're doing, because the mayor gets in there, and I got all the media in there. So, we just launched the Open Door Programme. The bylaw is being approved today, it's the Mayor's Key Item. And what the programme is about is three pillars. We know that in order to work with the private sector and the non-profit sector, we need land, we need planning, and we need financial tools. And this is what the programme is all about. It's about identifying our land, of course, we challenged the province and the feds to do the same. We identified land, and we have tested, so in April, we put 200 Madison in the market. We had an incredible amount of interest from the private sector, from large, big builders, to the smaller ones and the non-profit. And they came and they said, "Yep, we're willing to build these 80 units." The second thing is planning. We know that time is money. And let me tell you, a lot of us have heard from the industry loud and clear, planning processes are a problem in the city of Toronto. And I know that many of you have heard, "Oh, Gold Star Programme, here we go again." What does it mean? Well, it means that we're pushing hard, and you know, we usually say we're rolling the red carpet for affordable housing. Details will come in June, but the chief planner has guarantees that there will be planners and all the community councils dedicated for affordable housing applications, and this will be pushed to the forefront. We want more than that. The mayor and I have asked for timing, and actually saying, you know, we want targets on timing that can be measured, and we are waiting for that. The third thing is financing. And maybe because I passed through my previous life by a bank, I'm all about, you know, numbers, predictability, and how do we do this? And so, what we told the finance department is like, "We want a formula. We want a formula that the private and non-profit sector can go and understand that if they bring us a project that is $50 million, and we put a certain amount of equity through the benefits that we can give you, and we have, the things we have at the table are waiving of DCs, waiving of property taxes, conditions on parking, you know, we are ready to alleviate some parking, the land that we bring in." So, all this has a monetary value, and it's the equity that the city's coming to the project, that should equal to the amount of years and amount of affordability that you have to give us. I think it's pretty easy, right? We just need to get the finance department to get in there. So, that is coming in June. But the important thing is, the programme is getting approved today. It is exciting to see the city coming forward with the land. It is exciting to see the waiving of the property taxes and the development charges to the private sector, because we used to deal just with the non-profit sector. And one other thing that we added to the programme is actually start working with the mid-range rents as well, which is really important, because again, we know that these things affect each other, and we also need to build more of those mid-range, and it's not being built enough in the city of Toronto. So, looking forward to have that approved today. And, you know, this is not to say that we haven't been doing great projects in the city. Just this council meeting, we have the Weston Road Revitalisation Project partnership with the private sector, Artscape, different agencies in the city of Toronto, from the Parking Authority to the Affordable Housing Office. You'll be bringing affordable housing, a community hub, farmers' market, much activity to the area. What we want is to be able to replicate this at a much quicker pace, and that's why I think it's important to have a formula, so that the private sector knows what they can get out of these things when they're putting their performer together. But we know this is not enough, and that's why the mayor last week launched the City Building Fund. Transit and housing are essential to build a prosperous city. He believes in that. He wants a city that moves, he wants a city that cares, he wants a city that works. And in order to do that, there's two big areas that need investment. And that's why we put our money where our mouth is, and we created a levy that is actually going to be directed and specifically to the building of transit and housing in our city. The way we see it is, if we're asking the province and the federal to come to the table with money, and we're going to be asking a lot in the next year, and I know that there's somebody from the province, and there's people at CMHC in here, and I can't still believe that we're paying 9% for some of our mortgage at TCHC for CMHC, so I always have to plug in these little things in there. But we will be asking a lot. We are doing our part as well, and we are creating this City Building Fund. Because, like I said, we will be asking a lot from the feds and the province, and not only are we asking for money, but also some of the legislative tools. We have asked for inclusionary zoning. And what we have been talking about a lot with the province lately is, we need at least to protect the transit corridors. We're doing major investments in transit corridors in our city. We need to protect the affordability in these areas, otherwise, the people who we're building transit for are going to be pushed out again. We know that it happens. So, this is really important that we have the collaboration of the province to do this. And these are things that don't cost money. It's the legislation that we can do to affect this change. We've asked to reform the rent gear-to-income. It's about time that the rent gear-to-income calculations and how it's awarded is reformed, and we've heard rumours that that is coming. Other important policies that we are developing that is really important in the city of Toronto, mid-rise guidelines. It's under review. And again, this study, I think, will be really important, because I have to be honest with you, I think that a huge obstacle to the success of mid-rise is actually politicians. I've said this, you know, I don't know how many times, and in community council and council, and I have councillors fighting these six stories on the Danforth, and I'm like, "What are you doing?" It's like, you know, you need this kind of development. If you want to talk about affordability of housing in this city and affordable housing, you can't be championing this in one side and fighting six-stories or eight-story buildings. So, I'm hoping that some of this information, the economic impact of this is going to be helpful in helping educate the politicians, and helping the politicians educating our communities as well on the benefits of that. Wood frame construction, we know that it has been approved, and it's now starting to, we're starting to see a few projects coming in. It took a little bit of time, I think, more than we expected, but it is finally coming in. Development permit system, it is being appealed because of the affordable housing industry. I think you should maybe drop that appeal, but I'm not saying anything. It's probably a good thing. And one important thing that is happening also in the city of Toronto is the real estate review that is happening citywide. And why I think this is so important is, we've been talking about bringing land, and the real estate review is about the process and how we deal with real estate in the city. But we clearly need to have a housing lens on how we deal with real estate in the city of Toronto. Let me give you an example. Last month at council, there was a proposal to approve the reconstruction of five long-term care homes. I'm like, "Okay, fantastic," you know, another half a billion dollars. And I get up and ask the staff, it's like, "Did you investigate if you can build up? Can you build affordable housing on top of it? Makes sense, long-term care homes, why not? Continuum of care, affordable housing." And they look at me with this puzzled look and said, "No." I'm like, "Why not?" If we're going to the province and asking for inclusionary zoning, if we're saying we're going to be putting up land, it's not only about empty land, it's about air rights, it's about everything that we do, every library that we do, every subway station that we do, every long-term care home that we do, we always have to have the lens of how can we incorporate affordability in here? How can we bring housing in here and get affordability in here? And so, that is why it is so important, the real estate review that is happening in our city. So, much of this, I think, it's going to be also coming together as we are currently undergoing the five-year Housing Opportunities Plan review. We just finished our public consultation. We're going to start with our stakeholders, and by Q2, beginning of Q2 of next year, it will be coming to an end. So, I'm also hoping that this research that you are presenting here can feed into that and feed into our Housing Opportunities Plan of the city of Toronto. So, I believe that we at the city of Toronto are providing the leadership by working in all these different areas of the housing spectrum. But as I just mentioned, I don't think we can do this alone, and I don't think anybody can. The province can, the feds can, the private sector can. This is a complex issue, like you said. We need the different partners at the table, because we all have a different, but complementary role to play, and we need these partners to make a progress. In the past two years, through the Close the Housing Gap campaign, we've been advocating to the federal and provincial government, and I am encouraged by the commitment of May during the federal election campaign, and now the government in Ottawa. And those commitments will certainly enhance the efforts currently underway. And I'm not the only one, because I was starting to feel this way, and then I started asking a few people in the sector, and I think people agree with me, there is a certain momentum right now to tackle this housing issue. I think that the three levels of government are I think that the three levels of government are talking about it, the three levels of government have identified this as a major issue, and clearly, the private sector also sees this as that. So I think there is a momentum and that big things can happen on this file. So I am looking forward to having all of you at the table and to working with you, because at the end of the day, to attract talent, to attract investment, to attract business to our city, to have a truly world-class city, we need to tackle housing. And investing in housing, we all know that every dollar brings us a dollar forty. This is more taxes, this is more jobs, this is how you tackle poverty, this is how you bring prosperity. So the benefits of making these investments are clear and will go a long way to helping us breaking the cycle of poverty and have more prosperous communities. So if we truly want to build a city that is equitable and prosperous, we need to tackle housing, and I'm excited to working with you in the years to come. And I'm ready to answer any questions if you want.
We'll now open the floor for questions, but before we do, I wanted to thank councillor Bailaud for this both insightful and stimulating presentation. It's very interesting that she covered the complete spectrum of housing that needs to be affordable. She talked about the bedrock of both the households and bedrock of the local economy by having spin-off activities, and she outlined a number of innovative programs that you've been part of developing in the city, which is, I think, very encouraging for us, and went even further, say, what we need to do in the future. So you covered the whole spectrum, it was fantastic. So thank you very much for your comments, but I'd like to open the floor to questions at this point. We do have microphones, please.
Hello, my name is Robert Kelly. I just, I appreciate your enthusiasm, and it's an ongoing situation, and now it's evolved into the greater golden horseshoe. And connecting the dots is very important. My experience in a couple of sites, for example, are Kennedy and Eglington, which has been vacant for a number of years, and Davisville and Young. Can I, I don't understand why has nothing has been done for decades on these two specific sites, and there are many others, but just those, for example. Also, connecting the dots in a seamless manner. We need the golden horseshoe, we need to reinforce that, and Toronto is the focal point. We need to connect the border to Buffalo, Niagara Falls, Fort Erie, Port Weller, and all those areas, which I envision in a reckless way, like we did the Blue River IDOC with the underpass in 1918 when the bridge was open, that I could envision living in the Welland Canal and commuting to Toronto on a daily basis. I don't know, that may be reckless vision, but that's my hope, and your comments would be appreciated.
With regards to those specific sites, I mean, I can't, I can't give you the feedback, I don't know, but that's exactly the kind of issues that we're trying to get through the real estate review, to look at sites that have been set vacant for a long time. I can tell you, for example, the two sites that we've put out when we did our press conference, so the 200 Madison had sat vacant for 10 years, and this one that we just did, Block 36 at Fort York, had sat vacant for 20 years. You're absolutely right, and we don't understand, we have an issue of affordability in our city, and these sites are sitting vacant. So we need to be more aggressive, we're trying, and please send me those, I'll ask staff to look into those sites immediately and try to have as much as possible done as quickly as possible. With regards to the collaboration on the horseshoe, I couldn't agree more. I think we're moving more and more into that. You know, it takes time, you know, people are territorial, and it's always about municipality versus municipality, but I think, I think that in certain files, we're starting to see more and more collaboration. I mean, our investment agency, Invest Toronto, we're getting rid of all that, we are creating a regional investment company, so mayors are talking a lot more, and I think that we need to pressure that saying, you know what, maybe we need to go beyond just to how to attract investment for the region, it's about the other files. And, you know, Metrolinks tried to do on the transit, can we start talking more regional on the housing as well? I think there's collaborative approaches that should be taken in that. And there are organizations, I mean, I know that the Housing Lab on the Evergreen Brickworks, they brought in different people from the region to start talking about this issue. So the regions are talking, maybe not, you know, in an official mayor's capacity, but we're definitely talking, and, because this is, housing is not an issue that is only Toronto. We've seen it even through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, it's not only an urban issue, and it's not definitely only one or two cities, it's rural, it's urban, and it's national.
Richard?
Just curious, are you doing, are you looking at any other major metropolitan areas internationally as models for ideas?
We always try to look at models, so for, I'm going to give you an example of something that I'm very curious and that I'm poking at stuff is the pension funds, for example. So in New York, a lot of what they're doing is actually the pension funds are building housing, right? So it's stable investment, and they offer it as a benefit for their union members, right? So, you know, you create housing for teachers, you create, you know, and I'm poking out our pension funds, it's like, how come that is not happening here? You're going to India and spending $2 billion on affordable housing, what did I need to do to get you here? And I think we need to do more of that, absolutely, looking in that. For example, laneway housing, we're looking at the Vancouver model right now, because laneway housing, especially in the houses in downtown, a lot of them have coach houses, it's very expensive to own a home in downtown Toronto, a million dollars, some of them are over a million dollars. Why can't we use that as a second suite to help families being able to live in Toronto and actually increasing rental stock in the city of Toronto? So we are looking at that model for that. So we're always looking for opportunities, but obviously, research centers such as this one and the private sector are crucial as well to push us to innovate. You know, governments can be very, how should I say, I'm part of it, sometimes I forget about it, slow, so I think we always need to push things a bit harder and have them move quicker.
Richard?
Richard Joy from the Urban Land Institute. Could you expand on the inclusionary zoning from the Toronto perspective in a jurisdiction where zoning is low and all height and density is basically negotiated for all development? How do you see the idea of inclusionary zoning working where you may be looking at providing extra height or density to provide affordable housing when it's probably negotiated within a very restricted height and density window or envelope in the context of any normal development?
You're talking inclusionary, what we're doing right now or what we're asking for in the future?
What you're asking for.
So what we would like to, the reason why we've asked so much for inclusionary zoning, and particularly, we're pushing hard on transit routes, is that we know that if you don't protect that, if you come after, the land value has already increased. So you're dealing with that land, the developer bought that based on a certain amount of density that he thought he could get or he would get. If we don't, if we don't have that inclusionary zoning, and him or her knowing that they're going to have to provide 10%, 5% of affordable housing, that has an effect on the price of the land if we have it already across the city. And that's where we think that it could be a huge help in setting the tone. We could be not only doing it blanket across the city, I think that if, we're even having the conversation with the province and saying, you know what, we know that there's issues with doing across the city, can we start looking into large sites, which we already have, but instead of only looking at land, can we also start looking at large sites in vertical communities? Because I think we're losing something in there, because the reality is, you start having these very large communities of 60-story buildings that probably have as many units as some of the other ones, and that large site has to provide affordable housing, meanwhile, the other vertical community doesn't. So I think there's an inequity in there that needs to be corrected, and the transit routes is, I think it's really important. So how can we, those two, I think, could be a phased-in approach that we need to tackle right away.
Other questions? Okay, they're being done.
Thank you.
Anna, thank you very much, we appreciate your time, we know you have to run the council, thank you.